Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled planning and zoning board meeting of the City of West Miami, November twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three. We'll go ahead and follow the roll here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, in which there is no difference between justice and honor.
All right, can I get a roll call?
Okay, Gustavo Ceballos.
Here.
Emmanuel Gonzalez.
Here.
Álvaro Laureido.
Here.
Natalie Millian, she is running a few minutes late, but is on her way. Diana Rio.
Here.
Okay, we have a full quorum.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to approval of minutes. Do we have any comments or all entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
A second.
All those of you that say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead and move to old business. This item was continued from the previous planning and zoning board meeting. Mr. City Manager, who would like to call the item?
Yes, before that, let's swear. Anyone that will testify, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
This is a continuation of the meeting that we had last week. I'm going to ask Mr. Alonso to come up to the podium. Should we read it into the record what it is? Why don't we just be on the safe side, read it into the record? And then I'll have Mr. Alonso do a very quick recap of where we are and what our recommendation is.
Okay, so this is a continuance from the last two planning and zoning board meetings that we've had. Property address six-four-six-eight-six-four-seven-zero Southwest H Street in West Miami, Florida, three-three-one-four-four for special use permit index number twenty-two-three-zero-two for Frank's Fresh Fruit Market, Carlos Abreu, Abreu Inc., sixty-four-eighty Southwest H Street in West Miami, Florida. The applicant requested a special use permit for the property at six-four-six-eight-six-four-seven-zero Southwest H Street in West Miami. The property is owned for seed commercial, and the applicant is requesting to allow for a grocery store with heating, food service, and takeout, and alcoholic beverages to be offered only with food. Section zoning ordinance two-eight-two, section two-eight-point-one. And this is the third recommendation for possible approval.
For the record, and before, I'm sorry, for the record, everything that we have discussed in the first two hearings are, will be part of the record so that we can continue forward and have a continual record of first, the stuff that we discussed in the first two meetings will be part of this record as well. Mr. Alonso, if you could take over.
Okay, so you all have a memo in your packet dated today, which is the third evaluation following the last two meetings. So we've, you know, we've done, I don't, I'm not going to read through the entire memo because we've already done this in the past. But there were several items in the last couple of meetings that we had concern with, primarily in the parking area. Now, they, they do meet all our parking requirements, so we don't have an issue in terms of the parking that they're providing per the code. But we do still have just general concerns as to the tightness of the, of the plan. You know, there's not a whole lot we can do about that with the limitations of the site. They are meeting the parking requirements. There's several items that I stated here in the memo regarding canopy overhangs, the accessible parking spots that, you know, should all be addressed in the final site plan that gets submitted for permits. So all, you know, we don't see anything in the plan as it is that cannot be resolved or incorporated into the final plan. So the plan that they've submitted complies with, with the code. One of the, the last items that we spoke about at the last meeting was the dumpster location, which they've kind of removed around on the site. They've kept it on-site, and it'll be serviced on the site. They were previously serving it through the, through the service alley, which really didn't work. So they made that correction. And at this point, we have, our recommendation is, is for approval with the conditions that we've set forth in this memo. And this will be reviewed as part of our final permits and all that for the site when we get those drawings. And I think the manager wants that.
Yeah, if, as an additional condition, if the city attorney agrees, I would like to put into the record, if this board decides to move forward with this, that if all the conditions are not met, and for the record, the last board member's here, and she has not missed a sufficient amount that you could be part of this.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. I see the introduction have been very brief. So I think that in order for the new, the, the new, the member that just came in, why don't you repeat that again so she can vote on that?
Sure.
Okay.
So as I stated, we, you have a memorandum in your packet which summarizes the three reviews that we've done now on the property, the initial review, followed by the, the two revisions that we've had to their packet after the last two meetings that they've received continuance on. They meet all the technical requirements of our zoning ordinance. We've, we've gone back and forth with them on a couple of items. So they, they're, from a technical perspective, they meet all the, all the requirements of the code. We, we do still put on the record that, you know, we have some concerns as to the circulation of the parking on their site. But, you know, it, it kind of is what it is with the limitations that they have on the site. There are certain things that we put in the memo that we would request be addressed during final site plans for permit, such as there's some height issues that they're, they're going to need to kind of signalize on their site. And there's some clarity that we need on the accessible parking. But those are all items that could be resolved at the time of permit. And then one of the final items that we had issue with was the dumpster location, which they have corrected, and they're, they're keeping all that on-site. So that, along with several of the other conditions that were set to their prior special use permit, and a condition that the manager would like to add, we recommend approval of, of the project as is here.
And let me start over again. First of all, board, my happy holidays, merry Christmas to all and everybody here because I don't think we'll be meeting before the end of the year. I do expect and I hope that I see a lot of you all at the Christmas lighting on December first at Cooper Park. That's my, that's my shameful plug for that event on, on Friday night. I would like to proffer two things. If this board decides to move forward and, and recommend approval to the full commission, that we add a clause that we can revoke their certificate of occupancy if they violate any of the other terms, in terms of the trash collection, in terms of stuff where they have to park their, their trucks for, for deliveries and so on and so forth. In addition to that, I am also going to recommend to the, to the city commission that we put up no parking signs for about a block, a block length south of their place so that they don't continue to have people parking and blocking driveways and making life miserable for our residents of that area. Those are the two conditions that I would like to add to it. They've worked, they've tried very hard to work with us to get to meet with all the technical points of the, of the planning code, and they have met for the most part, most, if not all, the points of the planning code.
Anyone have any questions for city staff?
Yes, I do. I do have a question. Have we, I don't see any loading or unloading locations on this plan. And I personally almost had a head-on collision Friday when I was turning down on Sixty-Fifth, going south to my house. There was a truck there again, and a car was coming towards on the only open lane. So traffic is still a concern for me, and loading and unloading is still a concern for me. There's not any indication here where semi-truck or trucking come in and load and unload or back away from the alley.
Mr. Chair, would you suggest to have a, some sort of request? Or if anybody wants to address this issue as it stands right now?
Currently, the board is, can make any questions of city staff. I don't know if the applicant is also here that wants to also comment after, so I'm assuming we'll need to give them an opportunity. And then we can open up to public comment if there's any other comment. But at least for right now, if staff would like to address the board member's concern?
Good.
Yeah, they're, they're showing a loading area on the south side of the site on the, on the current plan, the delivery zone. As, as I've stated, and as we stated for the record, it's still, it's still pretty tight. And, you know, we generally have concerns about that. I think we, we all know that we've seen the trucks stacking out on the avenue. You know, to the, to the letter of the code, they've, they've shown on their plan where they're going to do their deliveries. I, I think your concern is, it's probably going to be more of a point of enforcement and making sure that they're doing that, and I think that's where the manager's coming from with his conditions. So, yeah, you know, we, we do have concerns. It's a tight site. But, you know, as far as, at this point, they've, you know, they've demonstrated on, on their site plan compliance with the ordinance.
To further that point, they're showing, they're, they are showing an area that's thirty-five feet, a, a loading zone that's just directly east of the new location for the dumpster. That is hence why I also recommend that we do a, a condition that if they do not comply and they continue to have deliveries off of Southwest Sixty-Fifth Avenue, that we have the right to revoke their certificate of occupancy for that, for the new addition.
Understood. Anyone else have any other questions or comments for staff before I turn it over to the applicant?
Can we possibly add no deliver, no loading on Eighth Street?
I don't think Efta would allow it in the first place, but we could absolutely add that as well.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question, maybe it's proper or not. Would it be proper that this commission makes a visit to that location and see in action before we approve anything?
This board?
This board?
I mean, I have to defer to the city attorney, but I think it would be highly problematic to conduct some sort of a sunshine meeting out on-site.
That cannot be done, sir.
Yeah.
It would have to be advertised, and it would not be no record. There is a possibility of conflict or people that might have the idea of, especially commissioners, et cetera. So the chair is totally correct. You cannot have that, sir.
There's no other comments or questions for city staff? Go ahead and have the applicant make their presentation.
Good evening, board. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again, third time, hopefully. You know, it's lucky three, and we can be done. Bobby Behar, office at six-hundred Berko Avenue, thirty-five-hundred, representing the applicant, Frank's Fresh Fruit Market. I think we've, you know, there's been a lot of talk of what's been done. We've gone back and forth with staff. I think we know that special use exception, this is existing use that we're really just expanding a little bit into the next building to have a lot of more storage as well as parking. The uses as exists, the restaurant, the food, things like that will not be expanded. Just wanted to reiterate that. So as was mentioned, loading, we do have our loading zone, the dumpster location. We have that location that we work with staff to find a viable solution. Parking, you know, and, and that delivery system continues to be the main issue. I think it's something that, once we have this revised plan, we, you know, that is addressing those concerns, is when we will actually see those changes. It'll be hard to see a change without any actual, you know, approval or, you know, change to the site plan. That can't happen unless we're approved, you know, between today and commission. So I think that's something that, you know, with working with staff and getting the recommendation for approval, we will be able to see those, the fruit of those changes in the next couple of months. Not so much until this, until that happens. I know for parking, you know, we have extra spaces, so we'll be able to accommodate the, the new business, but more so to address some of the concerns from the neighbors who were talking about parking on the street. The no parking signs, as mentioned, can work, but we were also thinking potentially putting somebody, you know, an employee on the street, guiding and making sure nobody parks there, and they go in, into the site, into those extra spaces. I think between the signs, between having that, you know, that tenant, or not a tenant, the, you know, attendant or the employee guiding people and making sure they go inside, I think we could address, you know, a lot of those concerns and ensure that nobody parks on-site. I don't want to take up, you know, too much time, so I will, we presented this a few times, so I will just open up for questions. I think that might be more productive.
Just one quick clarification. So are you proffering as part of your submittal that you will have an attendant during normal operating hours?
If that is something that, you know, we, we're willing to do that if necessary. One thing regarding the conditions, we have not seen any of the conditions. So I, we can't, you know, we don't know if they're okay or not. We did not receive that package. So I would like to just review that prior to accepting or approving any of those conditions.
Do we have those conditions codified somewhere that we can provide it to the applicant?
I mean, if they're, yeah, if they're existing, if there are any new ones, either way, I don't think, just to, so we can be clear and make sure we're on the same page.
I, I found them. Thank you.
You got?
The following conditions: maintain all patrons inside the property with no outdoor music, no loitering in or around the parking lot areas, no music or loud conversations in the parking lots. Parking lot must have required outdoor lighting per city ordinance. Order to provide a detailed map of layout of the interior space by a registered professional and provide a maximum occupancy not to exceed the allowed by Miami-Dade Fire Department. The requirement is also, in addition to that, you also must comply with all the other state agencies, and then the ones that I proffered today, that we have a right to revoke your certificate of occupancy for this addition if you do not comply with leaving, if you do not comply with trucks using the loading zone and continuously block the street. And the last one is, and the last one is, the one that you just proffered now, that you'd have an attendant to ensure that nobody you parks in the street.
Right, and the, just to be clear, the parking signs, that's something that, and that's you guys at City, not really today. That's kind of a different.
That's us that we're going to be doing. That's not a recommendation that I'll take to the city commission to do so.
Yeah, I mean, I believe all those conditions are already kind of in the CO, correct? Okay, so then we're okay on that. Anyone have any questions?
So, and to clarify, the no parking signage will be located on both sides of Sixty-Fifth, south of, south of this lot.
My recommendation to the city commission, which they will have to also approve it, will be no parking signs one block south of Eighth Street on Sixty-Fifth Avenue on both sides of the street.
On both sides, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah. Any additional signage that they might be proposing for the new storage area will have to come back to us as a separate application.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat that?
I apologize.
Any additional signage that they're proposing for the storage will have to come back to us as a new application.
That is correct.
Okay.
And again, to, for the record very clearly, there is no more additional seating. This is basically more of a grocery, and where you go and get the food and go back to the other place.
Right, as I, as shown on the plan, that's, you know, all storage, the food displayed, but there is no seating. The seating is going to be as existing in that, in that current area.
I just wanted to make, I wanted to put it on the record again.
Any other questions for the applicant? Go ahead and open up to a public comment. Is anybody in the audience that'd like to speak in favor or against this item? Please come up, state your name and your address to the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amarilis. I reside at eight-twenty, eight-twenty-two Southwest Sixty-Fifth Avenue. I, my concern is the parking on the streets, the cars and the trucks. It's, it has not stopped since last time I came. I'm very concerned that this is going to cause a very bad accident one day. So if you could assist me in trying to stop that, I would greatly appreciate it. I've lived in that residency for forty-five years, so I've seen a lot. And I would really, really appreciate if, you know, your assistance on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any discussions, questions? I had one question for the city manager or staff. The previous two meetings, was it city recommendation, were they for approval or were they denial?
No, the recommendation was to defer, given the conditions that they needed to correct.
Okay.
On both, on both occasions, Chairman, what we have some to do is go back to the drawing board and change some of the things around, make, clarify some of the stuff, like the no seating in the new area, that it was just basically a warming kitchen, for lack of a better word, and, and a grocery store. Fix the, the location of the dumpster, fix the loading and unloading. It was cleaning up the plans, and it was, in my opinion, too much to ask it to be fixed before it went to that county commission, that we would have to come back to you guys and do it the right way through you first.
Understood. If nobody has any other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion. Up or down, need to, need some sort of motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the project with the conditions as read on the record to include the revocation of the CO if the violation of the park, of the loading, no outdoor music, the parking signage on both sides of Sixth Sixty-Fifth Avenue, no loading from the public right of way. I don't know if I missed any, the way you read them out. And I would also like to add no loading from Eighth Street.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
If we have no further deliberation or any other questions, please, let's have a roll call.
Okay, Board Member Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Millian?
Yes.
Board Member Rio?
Yes.
Board Member Laureido?
No.
And Board Member Ceballos?
Yes.
Okay, item passes four-one.
Thank you all for your time. Can we go ahead and call the second item?
Okay, and for the record, given that it was approved, it will go for the next commission meeting, which I believe takes place in January, January tenth at six, at six-thirty PM. And the next item is a variance for application for Adolfo Ospina, property address five-seven-six-zero Southwest Ninth Street, West Miami, Florida, three-three-one-four-four. Applicant requests a variance to allow an oversized camping trailer to be parked in the front setback of their property at five-seven-six-zero Southwest Ninth Street. The camping trailer measures twenty-seven feet eleven inches in length and eight feet wide with a height of ten feet, ten inches, where maximum size of twenty-three feet is what is allowed by ordinance. The proposed variance, if allowed, will have a camping trailer parked in front of the home on existing driveway, whereas storing the camping trailer in the side yard setback area of an interior lot or rear yard setback area not nearer than three feet from the rear property line is what is allowed. This is from zoning ordinance two-eight-two, section four-eight-point-one, section A and B, and section four-eight-point-two, C. And there are photos attached in addition to the variance application in your packets.
Go ahead and make your presentation.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Adolfo Ospina. I've owned the house since two thousand thirteen. I'm married with two little girls. We bought the camper early April twenty-twenty-two. We use it for family trips. When I initially was doing, I guess, my due diligence on, you know, the camper, I went onto the city website. I came across the dos and don'ts for the, on the city website, and I came across one that, you know, I thought might have applied, but at the end of the day, one of the don'ts was, you know, not to park a commercial vehicle, the RV or the travel trailer, camper, however you want to, want to call it. It's not a commercial vehicle. It's something that, you know, we use, especially during this year. Even last year, there were weekends where we would, you know, take it every other weekend, where some, where people that we maintain it in well-conditioned, our house, we always keep it maintained, landscaping, whatnot. So honestly, I wouldn't be here in this position if I would have known that I wasn't allowed to park the camper in front of the house. When I made an attempt to, you know, see if I can park it in front of the house or not, I came across the dos and don'ts. At no point did the, did the dos and don'ts on that page reference the zoning ordinance or refer to, you know, reading or linking the zoning ordinance. So I, no point did ever come across that. I had to read another document or see if there was anything else that I needed to do any more research on. And so now, you know, I have this camper. I've been sent a violation based on the last meeting that I was here a couple of months ago. I was informed that I was incurring penalties. I was informed that I was incurring penalties that, you know, I didn't know I was incurring. From the very beginning, I was very upfront and honest with Mr. Pena, with Mr. Alvarez, and even I spoke with Commissioner Chavez, you know, telling him my situation. I didn't do this in bad faith. I didn't do this to, you know, cause a problem to the city or, you know, just to be a nuisance. It was just, I guess, an innocent mistake, which I didn't even know it was a mistake to begin with. So I just, I'm just requesting, you know, if, if, one, if those penalties can be waived or if, two, you know, if I pay these penalties, if they can be applied to, to like a fee for a permit to keep the camper on site. I've tried to, you know, look for another location to where to park it, but the places here in Miami where they do allow RV parking, they charge a lot of money, more than what the, what I pay for the RV on a monthly basis. So, and the commercial spaces that I've reached out to, they don't want to take on that liability, somebody else's property. Also, they were mentioning about, you know, incurring an additional insurance cost or whatever, so as of right now, I have no other place to park it. The only other option that I've, I've mentioned to George Alvarez and even to Commissioner Chavez was to move out of the house and buy somewhere else, which, you know, we, my family, we don't want to do that. We're comfortable where we're living at, the house where we brought my daughters to. I proposed to my wife in that house, so, I mean, we're, we're good where we're at. But, you know, that's.
Sir, I missed whether or not you mentioned your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Adolfo Ospina. My address is 5760 Southwest 9th Street.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Just one quick question for, for staff. I'm looking at the, the notice of public hearing and I'm also looking at what I believe is the memo. And the code says that no such equipment shall be stored in the front yard setback or in the front of the front line of the principal structure. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct, chairman.
And then I just, I guess, I'm just trying to follow the variance hearing agenda item. It says that where maximum size of 23 feet is what is allowed by ordinance, is that referring to the size of the land that's the biggest you could put on there because it would be in the side yard?
Yeah, the, the code, there's two sections of the code.
Identify yourself, please.
Frank Alonso, building official.
Okay.
There's two sections of the code which would have to be granted a variance for. Number one being that it's parked in the, in the front setback and in front of the front line of the principal structure, meaning it's just in front of the actual principal structure. The second being that the maximum, if, if hypothetically he had the camper on the side of his house or in the rear of the house where it is allowed, it couldn't, it couldn't be more than 23 feet. So, so he's, he's beyond the 23 feet and he's in front of the house. So it's actually two, two sections of the code that we're looking at granting a variance for.
So the 23 feet is just applicable throughout single family residential? You can't have a trailer more than 23 feet?
Correct. Boat or camper?
Regardless of how big your lot is?
Yeah, correct.
Understood. Thank you. I will defer to the board. Anybody have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Guess I'll ask one. So there's no, there's no way to fit it on the side of the, of the side of the home?
No, I, so right now, there's the space that I have on my property, it's very, it won't be able to physically and I, I've thought and I've tried, I've racked my brain all night trying to figure out how is it that we can do this, even if I park it parallel, you know, but it's, it just wouldn't. If I knew about the camper being 23 feet, I probably would have bought, you know, a smaller, smaller one. I bought it, the size that I bought it, if it's perfectly, it doesn't overlap the sidewalk, it doesn't impede anybody's access to the sidewalk, I mean, it's, it's on, on the property.
So you don't have eight feet on the side?
No, I don't. I wish I did. I wish I did. I would probably have to knock down the fence and ask my neighbor if I can take up that space, but then it would, I would have to destroy the landscaping that, the clutches that I, I had a landscaper install there. Yeah, it would, it would make it a lot uglier, to be honest with you.
Understood. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Perhaps the board would like to know that usually variance is to have some sort of harmony within the neighborhood. And unfortunately, this is a self-inflicted hardship that I think that the board should consider. I created hardship, I mean, there's a lot of case law that goes against that approval of the variance.
Can, can I make a, a point? Honestly, when I, when I, again, when I first started trying to do research, because I just wanted to make sure that, you know, what I was buying, I was, I was going to be okay with. I mean, I just referenced the do's and don'ts on the website. And again, I just want to point out that, like, nowhere on the websites, on the do's and don'ts, does it ever reference the zoning, or does it link the zoning ordinances or whatnot? I ended up getting the zoning orange because it was emailed to me after the fact. I, I really hate to think that it's a self-inflicted violation or whatnot, because I, I did try to make a good faith attempt to, you know, do my research.
Understood. If we have no other comments, questions, I will entertain a motion.
I do have a couple of comments. You're saying that you have a clusia hedge on the side that you would have to remove. How much are your side setbacks to your property line?
I don't.
How, how much side yard do you have now?
On the side? So, so the clutches are actually on the front part of the property after you pass the side gate, between the side gate and the house? I mean, it's, if, in order for me to attempt to get the camper on the side of the house, it would probably crash into the top part of the roof. It would destroy the clutches. I would have to remove the front gate. And, and it, it would be very, very tight. It'd probably cause more damage if I even tried to, to do that. It, it would be very tight. I, I honestly don't think, I, I'd never measured it, but I don't think that I have the eight feet space to park the RV. If not, yeah, it would, it would cause damage to the fence, to the plants, to the roof.
And unfortunately, our code, whether it was online when you looked at it or not, just does not allow it. There's no, there's no leeway for us. In terms of your fines, that's something we'll work with when we get this resolved. I'm not, I wouldn't let, let that worry you, but we need to find a better, in our, in my opinion, we, our code does not allow for this.
I understand. And, and that's why, from the very beginning, I, I've mentioned that, like, if there's anything that I can do as far as like paying a fee just to have it there, a permit for a year, if you say, hey, Adolfo, we're only going to allow it, you to have it for a year, then I know that in a year I have, you know, to look for another house, because, I mean, I'm not going to sell our RV where we take family vacations with regularly.
Understood. You have any other further comments or questions?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't be blaming the do's and don'ts that you find online. You could have done a little bit more research. If it's not mentioned on the do's and don'ts, then it's probably a don't. A phone call could have maybe resolved your, your questions, but it's, it's done and the camper's there. I also agree, I think that this is not the way that we want the city to continue to look like. It's not really compatible with the rest of, of the homes in the city and it, in, in my opinion, it is a, it doesn't have, it doesn't meet the criteria for, for hardship. Just because you bought it and now you can't have another house or can't sell it or won't sell it, that's really a financial hardship and that's not really one of the criterias for having, for allowing, for entertaining to approving a variance. Other than that, I, I, I don't believe that this is the type of variance that we would like to approve in the city as a whole, because it's incompatible with the rest of.
Any other comments? I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion not to approve the variance as presented to us.
I second.
There's no further comments. Can we please get a roll?
Okay, board member Gonzalez, how do you vote?
I vote no, not to approve it.
You vote not against? Pardon me, against the motion or in favor of the motion?
Favor of the motion.
Okay, all right.
Board member Millian?
Yes.
Board member Rio?
Yes.
Board member Lauro?
Yes.
Board member Ceballos?
Yes.
You may find some other type of relief. I just don't think a variance is going to be that kind of relief that you need. We're not the ones that can dismiss your code enforcement cases. Maybe there's an avenue there, maybe you can work with the city and, you know, maybe they can give you a time for compliance so you don't have a running fine, but that's just not within the purview of this board.
Okay, so I've, numerous occasions I've asked, you know, based on what I, what's given right now, like, I don't know how this works. I've never done this before, so, I mean, who do I go to or what do I do in order to get this resolved?
I'm sure that the, the city can provide you that information.
Okay.
I'll have our, I'll have our code office, code, code compliance officer.
Pardon me a minute, Mr. Manager. The issue, the problem is, sir, that we cannot give you legal advice.
I understand.
We cannot tell you, do this or do that. All that, that we can tell you is refer to staff and the staff will, more or less, will tell you what the, you had to appeal your code enforcement issues as the chair stated, but if denial is on legal reasons that the board stated.
We're going basically down the same place. If you can speak to our co-compliance officer, he'll give you your options. There are options that you have on your co-compliance side, which we'll be glad to work with you on. The variance for the trailer and the front is not something that we can give you options on, but we can work on the co-compliance side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Anyone have anything?
Item six, go to the order.
I have a question. Are we approving the calendar for next year or are we keeping it the same, same day of the week and all that?
Yeah, so in your packets.
So, and what, what, when will be the, the first meeting and?
So the first meeting, it's always going to be the last Wednesday of each month. The next one will be scheduled for end of January. Again, all of this takes place given that we get a variance application or somebody applies for a sign permit, anything related to planning and zoning, so.
Okay.
They're usually submit documents for the first week of the month. Off the top of my head, I do think that there will be for sure a meeting in January, so, and I sent the tentative schedule back in September, but I'll resend it so you guys have it.
Okay, thank you.
No other items? Meeting adjourned? Have a good night, everyone.
Happy holidays to everybody. Merry Christmas.